I'd like to call this meeting of the Fremont County Planning Commission to order. And the, join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, I will call the roll. I myself am here, and Larry Brown is here. And Rudal Mergelman is here, and Dale McCullough is here, and we have a quorum by the skin of our teeth. And with that, the, has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? I'm open to a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda as written.
I'll accept in a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rudal?
Aye.
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 Our next item of business is the approval of minutes from February 4th. Any questions or concerns on the minutes? Then I'm open to a motion.
I move we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you, Rudal.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Aye.
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 All right. We don't have any unfinished business. Under new business, we have SRU 24-005 Marchand Ranch Wedding and Event Venue. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming in on this beautiful spring day. All right, so we have 24-005 Marchand Ranch Wedding and Event Venue. The purpose of this is for a wedding and event venue to be operated seven days a week. Events will primarily be held in the afternoons or evenings. We'll have an end time of around 10:00, 10:30, with cleanup starting normally around 11:00. The venue has an occupancy of 200 guests inside of the structure. The address for this location is 4801 State Highway 9, Canyon City. And for the background, the Marchand Ranch Wedding and Event Venue is held an active temporary use permit since April 25th of '23. In this timeframe, the department has received no complaints regarding events at this location. The land use, the zoning and land use is all residential three with residential slash ranching uses. We do have a revised traffic study. So we do have different information that, I'll get into that a little bit later with the new C.D.O. letter. So the number of access points to this parcel is two. The parcel actually accesses off of County Road 323A, Canyon City. Fire protection is Tallahassee Fire Protection District. It's hold water by game trucking. We have a bathroom structure with OWTS on site. Contract to show that a weekly pickup from Republic with a four-yard cubic dumpster. There is lighting. It's downward-facing solar lights in the parking area and on the buildings in the walk areas. We have an approved noxious control weed plan. We have received no public comments or concerns. We have no comment from C.D.O. We do, our updated letter from C.D.O., or sorry, F.C.D.O., our updated letter from C.D.O. dated 4/30/25 states that they can allow an access permit, providing the county includes certain language in the approval if this does get approved. So that's just something to be noted. So they've provided the language that they would like added. For the building department, the SRU is in compliance with the building codes and the OWTS regulations. Fire protection plan meets all code requirements. Fremont Conservation District had concerns about noxious weeds, but again, we have an approved weed plan, so we have that addressed. The overall lot size is 220 acres with the SRU boundary for the event and venue at 3.16 acres. And we have enough parking. The areas are hard, the ADA parking spots are hard-surfaced. We do have a waiver request for landscaping. And with all of that being said, we found the application is in compliance with the crimes requirements of the Fremont County zoning resolution, and staff recommends approval of this SRU with the following contingencies. And that would be the language added and approved C.D.O. permit and just a revised site plan. So that is everything. I'm open to questions if there are any.
What was that about? I didn't catch that about the revised site plan.
Revised site plan. There's a couple little things to clean up, so, just one or two little things. So revised site plan's pretty standard.
Okay, and so that's, that'll be one of the contingencies?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, the, with that, would the applicant care to say anything to us?
I'm Tiffany Foster. We've been, oh, I'm so sorry. There we go. I'm Tiffany Foster. And we've been super successful so far, so we're hoping that we can get approved for the SRU so that we don't have to continue running under the temporary use permit. So, other than that.
And you have received a copy of the April 30 letter, is that correct, from C.D.O.?
Yes.
And you're fine with those being added, the language that they're requesting being added as a contingency?
Well, I mean, it's slightly confusing, the verbiage. I feel like it's super contradictory as far as the first sentence saying that we can have 10 vehicles per hour, but then the second sentence saying no event parking. So it's a little interesting, but, and Dan might, I don't know if this is something you want to speak on or not, but I have some thoughts, but I don't know.
It's certainly something that I can contact C.D.O. and see if we can clarify to have a clear picture, so there are no misunderstandings.
Got you. Nonetheless, we need to either include these or not, and so the question is for the applicant, are you comfortable with those being added with the idea that you're going to talk some more with C.D.O. and see what can be worked out?
Yes, yes. And I think that, just to take it one step of more clarification, I'm really happy to do the shuttles because we have applied, not myself, but through a third-party, applied for a liquor license. And so I think overall, the big picture, it's going to be excellent down the road to have shuttle service anyway, so I'm really happy to do so. But I do think that there are going to be certain individuals or circumstances where people need to be able to drive themselves. Handicap, I already have the handicap accessibility, so I think that that should be a contingency. And so they put in there maybe 10 per hour. That's fine with me, but then the other side of that is we can have 50 cars leave at one time, turning right. And so there's definitely some gray area. I'm fine with the gray area as long as I'm not getting in trouble for having, you know, possibly 10 to 30 vehicles on site at various events. Certainly not ever, every one is going to need that many, but there'll be bridal party, there'll be vendors, and then there'll be possible case scenarios of needing to drive themselves instead of using a shuttle. So, with that said.
Okay, any questions from, Matt, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just here for support.
Okay, the, any, any questions?
Yeah, the only, the only question I had, and I asked Joan about it, we cleared it up, you brought it up again. I've worked on a couple of these, and liquor licenses seem to be a prominent part of getting these approved, but you're not going to have a liquor license.
I will not myself. It's, it's being done through Rebecca Reich, who owns Bar Hoppers and is already cleared with Bar Hoppers. It's a legit LLC and whatnot. And then she also owns Thunder Road Liquor. So she's doing that on her own, and she's going to lease a small space from me, quote-unquote, "the bar," so.
So you, your operation will not have a liquor license?
Mine, myself, will not, no.
Subcontracted, yeah, okay.
Yes, correct.
As I understand it, it'll be somewhat similar to the situation at the Pathfinder Park?
Correct.
There is a liquor license there?
Absolutely.
By a contractor, not the county?
Yes.
Yeah, and all liquor permitting, obviously, will get reviewed through the clerk's office with the county commissioners to deem it sufficient, so. It will have review if it's presented.
Any other questions, sir, comments? I'm open to a motion. Anybody care to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the SRU and include the, call it by the Department of Transportation Letter of April 30, 2025, as one of the contingencies.
And, and including the revised site plan?
Yes, the revised site plan.
And the waiver for the landscaping plan?
And waiver for landscaping.
And, oh yeah, we need a waiver for that, too.
Thank you.
Landscaping.
We've got, we've got a motion. We've worked on up here a little bit. The, do I have here a second?
One second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Dale?
Aye.
Larry? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That might be a record.
And we're ready for our next item of business, which is, get to the right page here, CUP 24-001 Red Creek Quarry. And this is a conditional use permit for Wholesome to expand their quarry operation.
Yep. So I'm going to open this one up again. So here we have CUP 24-001, Wholesome Red Creek Quarry, if I don't get tongue-tied here. All right, so Wholesome's Red Creek Quarry will operate during daylight hours, eight to 12 hours a day, seven days a week, approximately 27 employees that will work at the quarry. Employees, employees and equipment currently working at the Bear the Bear Creek Quarry will operate Red Creek Quarry. The CUP boundary will encompass 1,492 acres to include a 219.72 acres for the material transport access corridor, or the MTAC, which will run between the cement plant and the Red Creek Quarry. This MTAC will be enclosed by a six-foot-high chain-link fence and include a 40-foot-wide roadway for vehicular traffic and conveyor, and a conveyor that is approximately 5.7 miles long to transport material. The MTAC will include 13 wildlife crossings, and the MTAC will also include a conveyor crossing overpass over County Road 112. The site will have improvements that include a 184-by-70 metal building, a vault for sanitation, a water well, and a 20,000-gallon double-walled above-ground fuel tank with concrete wall crash protection structure. Red Creek Quarry includes six contiguous land sections. Two sections are in Fremont County and four sections are in Pueblo County. The mining permit in Pueblo County is expected to be submitted in the near future. This application is for the two sections of land in Fremont County and permissions for the use of the MTAC to transport material from the four sections of land in Pueblo County, providing that application is approved. Red Creek Quarry will be the new limestone and sandstone source for Wholesome and will provide material for the plant for approximately the next 100 years. This CUP request is for the life of use of this mine. The location is at 3500 US Highway 120 in Florence. For background and associated cases, Bear Creek Quarry is the current limestone and sandstone source for cement production at the Wholesome Plant and is reaching the end of life. Red Creek Quarry has previously held a CUP, file number 02003, to allow for exploration. A limestone quarry and four generations of cement plants have been operating east of Florence, Colorado since the late 1890s. The current plant facility, plant number four, increased production in 2001. About 3,200,000 tons of limestone are required per year to supply the current plant. Sandstone is supplied from a smaller quarry established in the floor of the limestone quarry and is extracted at an annual rate of approximately 120,000 tons. This CUP is in a residential three zone district. To the east, they have Pueblo County. To the north, you have residential three slash industrial zoning. South and west, we have residential three and ranching activities. For the estimated traffic count, there are no increases to the site. It's going to stay at 54 trips per day. It's going to have two access points. Service by the Florence Fire Protection District. For sanitation, they're requesting a vault, so that way during times of remediation and reclamation, there will be no contaminated soil. Building Department has recommended they apply for the permitting for the vault once, if approved. Waste Management is going to do weekly trash pickup. Natural gas, they're going to have a 2,000-gallon propane tank on site. For lighting, there's going to be lighting on, around the building area and along the MTAC. A noxious weed control plan has been approved. The access points are going to be from State Highway 120 and State Highway 96. Let's see, for comments from Public Health, no concerns. F.C.D.O. just says any agreements that are in place right now on CR 112 stay in place, if, if there are any. C.D.O. says access permits will not be required at this time. However, if traffic volumes in the future increase by greater than 20% of the permitted number, the permitty is required to apply for a new access permit and may be required to construct highway improvements. Fremont County Building Department, Public Environmental Health, structures will need to be permitted. Fire Protection Plan does not have any opposition. Conservation District has no comments at this time. Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety, the Bear Creek Quarry permit was amended for Red Creek Quarry, and it was approved. Parks and Wildlife, let's see here. Parks and Wildlife had some comments about possible access or improvements to areas. That was forwarded on to the applicant. The applicant supplied a response, which was given back to Parks and Wildlife, and we have not received a response from them. So at this time, it's unknown or satisfactory. Waivers from landscaping? So a landscaping waiver is an ask. So, having found the application is in compliance with the requirements of the Fremont County zoning resolution, staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit with the following conditions. Comply with any roadway maintenance agreements for County Road 112. Apply for building permits for any structures and a vault permit. And just settle on an agreement with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. The applicant feels they've satisfied it, but I just don't have something concrete to say that it's been done, right? So those are the three conditions I would suggest or recommend.
Thank you for that. Do we have representatives from the applicant?
Good afternoon. Hi, I'm Angela Boon. Tony, pleased to see you all this afternoon. With us today from Wholesome, we have Mike Tully, and he is manager of raw materials and quarries. We have Hamza, and he is the plant manager. We have Mr. Shad Sapiro. He is the environmental manager. We have Tim Smith. There's nobody left at the quarry, huh? We're all here. And we have Justin Kurth, and he is public affairs and communicate, community relations manager. So the gang's all here. Ask them the hard questions. Here's the easy ones. So before I start here, regarding traffic on County Road 112?
Yes, ma'am.
There isn't any. We have to cross it, but the traffic is interior to the plant, and then it stays on MTAC.
Yep.
So regarding maintenance of County Road 112, that is between Martin Marietta and Wholesome WCR? That is not Wholesome USA.
So, and, and F.C.D.O.'s only concern was, if there was anything in place, just that continue to honor it. There's nothing?
There is nothing in place with Wholesome USA.
Okay, then it would not apply.
Okay, so strike that. Okay, just make that clear. Next is the sanitation vault. I submitted application to dear Mr. Wyatt, and it went through that health department process, and it was approved. Okay. C.D.O., the access permit on Highway 96 was approved. The improvements were done, and the improvements were approved. So the access is, that's C.D.O. So now I'll get to my part. Got that? Okay. So the Bear Creek Quarry, what you are familiar with, was first permitted in 1977, but that was when Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety, then Minerals and Geology existed. So it was already being mined when that agency formed and they started permitting. So that has been the limestone, limestone and sandstone resource for the plant for a gazillion years, and that is a real number. It is under reclamation, approximately half of it, and the maximum remaining life is about four years. It just depends on how the resource plays out with the grade. So their intent is to transition from the Bear Creek Quarry on the north to the Red Creek Quarry on the south. I wouldn't happen to have the overall, the overall site plan that shows both the plant, so they get a feel for that. The process for mine development is that we're hoping that 2025 is the year of approvals. That's what we're going to call it. Okay, is there one before that that shows the whole thing? You know what? That's it, huh? I guess we can look over to the top right-hand corner. I feel like there's a vicinity map. There isn't. Okay, so 2025 is the year of submissions and approvals. Yes, so what we're doing is we're going up to the concrete plant that's on the very north, and traveling down the path there is, that you're seeing is MTAC. That's where the conveyor and the access road is going to be. And then the rectangle on the bottom is the actual quarry itself. So they're moving from the north to below the plant, and then MTAC is the, so in 2026, they would begin commencement of mine development, that is, building the MTAC, the road, the conveyor, and doing the infrastructure at the mine, with the goal to begin mining in 2027. So all of this site development includes not just all the infrastructure for the mine and the corridor in between, but it also includes a San Isabele Electric Power Line as well, which is the source of electricity for Red Creek. Big, big endeavor. Regarding CPW, okay, so we had a delightful meeting with CPW at the site in October 19th of 2023, came to the plant, went out and toured the facility, received comments soon thereafter, November 14th of 2023. And during that conversation, and even in the site, we discussed with them impacts, wildlife crossings, over-unders, what to expect, and that's why now there are wildlife crossings. And the wildlife crossings have been designed using C.D.O. specifications for the size of the animals. So then with the new comments that came around, I picked up the phone and I talked to dear Mr. Zach Holder. We're all familiar with him. And we just discussed, we all know this is a long life, a large project, and things change. And so the conversation was, just keep the conversation open. The doors open for suggestions if something happens. And so what I did is I gave him Tim's phone number. So if Zach needs anything, he's going to call Tim. And I also talked to him about the extended hours, because that was a misunderstanding. What that was, was a alignment between the first draft of the CUP, the hours didn't match the approved hours in the DRMS permit. And so what looked like an extension was just aligning them, clearing up that detail. All right, so as we move into 2025, what we hope to finish up with is that there's two crossings for the drainages across the MTAC that have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers. The Air Pollution Control Division permit is being modified and anticipated to be submitted yet this year. We have water quality control, CDPHG as well. There's going to have to be a construction permit just for MTAC. And then, of course, there's a mine permit that we'll submit later on in 2025. We are getting ready to submit for the special use permit to the county of Pueblo for the four sections to the east. DRMS is, we still have obligation to do water monitoring during this interim time. Even though the baseline is finished, we have to do some interim monitoring until such time as the mine starts up. And then once that starts up, then of course, there's water monitoring the whole time through that. That's what I have. So in conclusion, we would just like to respectfully request that perhaps you recommend approval. Wholesome's a longtime member of Fremont County. I mean, they were here before I grew up. They're a major employer. They're one of the highest taxpayers in the county. They've just been here forever, and they've been good members of the community. And this would allow them to stay and continue.
Great. Any questions from the commissioners?
I just have one. Do you, the state mining permit, is that good for 100 years?
Mm-hmm. Life of the mine.
Without any reviews, do they?
Oh, gosh, no. No, there's constantly, you know, there's regular inspections, and in any inspection, they can ask you to do a revision of some sort if they see like something needs, much like the wildlife. As things progress, and if something seems not to work, or they think something works better, or there's a better understanding of something, then they have the discussion, and then they can ask for that change. No, it's, what we have today, in 100 years, they're going to say, what were they thinking? Okay, they're going to say that in 50 years, I guess.
I'm from Florence.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to go back with, first with the information. We've been hearing all about this down there.
Oh, have you?
So '25 is the approval. 2025, that's what you're saying, year of approval. So the question that I've been hearing is when they're actually going to start building the conveyor belt and developing the quarry? Because we've been hearing everything from 1,200 to 1,600 people coming in to build this conveyor belt.
I guess I'll let, I'll let Mike.
That's what I, I think, has a lot of people.
That's a lot.
So we're estimating that we're going to receive all the permits by the end of the year, 2025. The air permit, just as an update, was being submitted today.
Really?
So, and then we're working on the water permits, and then Pueblo County CUP, so we expect all of them. We expect development to start in 2025.
This year or next year?
2026, excuse me. Beginning of 2026. All the permits are there. At the same time, we're, we've sent tenders out to all equipment manufacturers and construction groups and everything, so that we get that, and we're hoping to get approval for the full project, hopefully by the end of the year, first quarter next year. Then we would begin preparing MTAC corridor, as well as the quarry for production in 2027. And that's the plan as it lays today.
And how many people do you think are involved as well?
It will be put out to a major company that does what we call EPC, engineering, purchase, construction. And with that, we anticipate maybe 100 people are going to be coming in?
Over the course of the entire construction of the project?
Which, which we expect 2026 and part of 2027.
Wrapping up in 27?
Yep.
100.
100, good.
Okay, so that's the timeline that we have today. And we've gone to the limits of the timeline, because what we don't want to do is run the plant out of limestone. So, so everything's timed on that basis.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I do have a couple. The, as I understand it, you have a fully permitted facility currently?
Oh, yes.
And so those permits are in effect now for
Yes, sir.
operations that are conducting. And really, what you're doing is expanding the permits, essentially, to cover the scope of future operations. The, the question I have there is, is this, does Wholesome intend to start at the closest quarries and move out? Are they going to build the conveyor all at once, or is it, will be a stepwise?
So the conveyor, the conveyor will start at the quarry, in actually in Section 24 of Fremont County. And it'll go all the way up, back up to the plant on company property all the way. And it'll go all the way up, back up to the plant, on company property all the way. So the mine plan that was submitted for the DRMS permit, we did in 10-year increments blocks through the life of the mine. And we intend to start in sections 24, 25 of Fremont County. That's the closest. And then as the years go by, in 30 years, we'll probably be approaching Pueblo County.
So the, the construction of the conveyor will be stepwise or all at once?
All at once.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, the, you, you do have a current mining permit.
Yes.
Do you have any items of noncompliance or open items for previous inspections?
Not that we're aware of, no.
You'd be aware if you had some.
Yeah, we would, but.
We're, we're not currently working on points of noncompliance. No, no.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, and I did note that one other, one other kind of comment, that there was a list of hazardous materials for the site, but I did not see explosives on there. Is the, Anna, perhaps I just didn't dive deep enough, but is, are you?
It's just a subcontractor.
It'd be a subcontractor that will bring everything in to, yeah. Great, okay. And so the, the, what I, what I would imagine then is that their hazardous materials plan would cover those materials. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions?
I just have one, if you had, this is more of a personal inquiry. You talked to Zach about the wildlife down in there?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Are those sheep still down in there?
Down in the south end.
The south end? Yeah.
Very east south.
Good.
County where you probably, have you been out?
I, I haven't been down there for...
So the Minacoa Canal comes in and cuts down in the very southeast
Mm-hmm.
... corner of the quarry. And we've limited a distance of 200 feet away from that for any activity. But down in that corner, the canal comes and has a, a fall, and then comes up the other side of Red Creek. Down in those hills, I've seen the sheep.
Yeah.
So they are still there.
There's some of the biggest rams in the state.
There was a big one with a big curve.
That one big one, yeah. Good, I'm glad they're still there.
Any other questions, comments from the commissioners?
What was, uh, the gentleman's name?
This is Mr. Tully, Mike.
T O E.
L L E.
The, in Utah, that's pronounced Tuella.
No relation.
[laughing] Okay, with that, I'm open to a motion.
Dan, let me ask one more question, that is, with this possibility of 100 years involved with this thing, does the county have any way of, of going into this permit and making sure that things are being done properly and so on?
So code enforcement, um, all, all SRUs, CUPs, and now with our new regs, condition, or, uh, commercial development plans, code enforcement goes out and does a yearly inspection for compliance. So code enforcement will be onsite yearly, and obviously if any complaints were ever received, code enforcement would go out and inspect, um, at that time as well. So we will be doing a yearly inspection every year to make sure that what they're doing matches the plan.
And as far as the county is concerned, have we given any CUPs for 100 years, or?
There's one that I know of, yes, the Parkdale Pit, um, other side of Eight Mile. Um, that, that CUP was for 800 years.
Wow. Just seems like a long time to give something like that without a review. I know you're going to review it not every year, which is, which is great, but, okay.
It, it is a long, long chunk of time, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And so unless there's other questions, I'm, or comments, I'm open to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve CUP 24 dash 001, Red Creek Canyon, Red Creek Quarry, wholesome.
With the conditions that they apply for building permits and reach an agreement with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. We've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments?
Who?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. And with that, with no other business to consider, we are adjourned.